Welcome everybody out tonight.
Dad, when I was getting ready to leave.
Alright, first item, we're gonna get started as approval of the regular many, meeting minutes. Motion is second, any further discussion? Those in favor, signify by the aye. Post same. Motion passes. And special call meet?
Thank you, motion we passed, approved the meeting, minutes of the special call meeting.
We have a motion is second, any further discussion? Those in favor, signify by the aye. Post same. Motion passes. Uh, bills?
Make a motion, we pay our bills.
We have a motion is second, any further discussion? Those in favor, signify by the aye. Post same. Motion passes. Uh, going on down to new business, first item is the municipal road eight fund. Is that in everybody's packet? The letter? Okay, well, it's a resolution we have to pass every year to get our money from the state. Was it seventy, or is it eighty this year?
It was seventy something last year, was it?
It was a little higher, but I don't remember. Yeah, eighty-two thousand five forty-six. And that gets paid out over three. Three times, you know, you get one in this summer and then we'll get one in the coming winter and then we'll finish it up.
I moved to approve second reading ordinance for...
Yep, this is the municipal...
Municipal.
It's a resolution.
It doesn't have to have a second reading?
No. So you are, motion to approve the municipal aid resolution and Sandy you second? Those in favor, signify by the aye. Post same. Motion passes. Next item is the second reading of the ordinance adding to the code of ordinance book that we all talked about last month. And it's just to update the big book. But I do need a...
Make a motion that we approve the second reading of the ordinance adding to the code of ordinance books.
We have a motion is second, any further discussion? Those in favor, signify by the aye. Post same. Motion passes. Next item is a resolution for Arbor Day, which would be April twenty-fifth. It's on a Friday. And that's part of the Tree City USA program that we do.
You want to get trees to give away this time of year?
Well, they usually get them at the NRC's office.
They donate, aren't they?
They come through, I think they come through.
US forestry.
I make a motion we pass that resolution.
We have a motion is second, any further discussion? Those in favor, signify by the aye. Post same. Motion passes. Next item's office internet.
Yes, I've got some quotes here to change over the spectrum from AT&amp;T. The AT&amp;T internet we have is cellular-based internet, so anytime we lose phone service, we lose internet, we lose being able to talk to people on the phone. And our speed is very slow, this speed here will be about ten times what we have now, if you look at it.
I got a spectrum at home and I had no crumble out of it.
That's what we've been recommended by our IT people as well.
I have AT&amp;T and no, no problems, so whatever.
My AT&amp;T was awful, worse spectrum.
We are blessed, yeah.
Sometimes I think AT&amp;T is where you're located.
And it may be, because we never have any problems.
This one eighty-five, am I right?
But if our IT people recommend it.
Okay, what is it now?
One oh five.
If it hadn't worked, it didn't work.
We'll see. Your motion is approved. I moved to approve spectrum for the office internet.
We have a motion is second, any further discussion? Those in favor, signify by the aye. Post same. Motion passes. Item number five personnel is gonna have to go into closed session, that'd be a closed session issue dealing with personnel issues. So next we'll go to Commissioner Crump, do you have anything to bring up?
No, we're dead, dead on.
Way to go, baby.
Sandy?
Streetlights. You know where we are with our streetlights?
Melissa called in about Buddy Shrewsbury's last swing, we filled out a form for it, is that correct? And then we went on the, there's two, there's one in their front yard that we called it, that's two right up there by Buddy. And then on the other fourth street, we called about it, they're gonna change the bull on the end. And then one more we called about.
Up here on Rochester?
Yes, Sandy looked at it and Lisa's place rolls forward, we think it needs to be one of her parts. She's wanting us to put on city facing her.
Because there's a couple of...
I mean, I don't, I just know they asked about a light up there.
There's a couple of street, and I did call and left a message, I didn't hear back from them. But there's a couple of streetlights there, but her parking lot is just really dark.
Okay, I wondered what other streetlights are working?
They work, yes.
Okay.
They were working well.
I suspected.
The one on the end of fourth, it looks like somebody got alien light.
We called them, so we're at AT&amp;T, he's here, waiting list now.
AT&amp;T?
KU's, I'm sorry.
Have they been to, been here already, because Buddy knew about it?
I called Buddy.
Okay.
And that's when he told me about the one, is it Mr. Drake's front yard?
Across the street, yeah.
Yes, he said there's also one in his front yard, so I put it on the list too.
Is it a red light on the streetlights?
Yes.
We have, um, preschool road down the bottom, it is dark, I mean, it's so dark. There's one at the corner, and there's one on that, the road towards the hill there. And we really need one down there where it's dark.
Yeah, we'll check it out. What's the address that you live at?
I live five thirty, preschool road.
Is it near Liberty?
It's on that end, yeah. You say there is one at the corner by Liberty and then one up at the base of the hill?
I'll put it on my list. No problem.
There's holes through there, won't there? Yeah, so we can get that back there pretty easy. Do we need a resolution on that? Let's go ahead and do that, if you don't care, you wanna know that?
How does need be worded, resolution to...
Add a streetlight.
Add a streetlights. Five thirty-two preschool road.
We got a motion is second, any further discussion? Those in favor, signify by the aye. Post same. Commissioner Patton?
No, I, we're, we're working pretty good, I like.
Well, you can.
Okay, we put in the paper that, and I, some of y'all may be here for that, I don't know, that we're applying for a land and water grant through Grad. We wanted to do some development with it. It's probably, since I've been going here, it's probably the best grant I've ever seen. It's a ninety-eight percent match, or is it ninety-nine percent? Anyway, we get a million dollars for twenty thousand bucks. And it can be used on anything that pertains to, like, a water, something with water, something with parks, anything like that, we can use it on. So if we wanted to put in new playground equipment, or we wanted to put in a splash pad, or we wanted to put in a skate park, or whatever we want to put in, we can do this. And we only, it's only gonna cost the city twenty thousand dollars, which is really unheard of for us to get a million dollars. That's a lot of money for us. Yes.
Okay, okay, I had not seen that, but that actually is why I came tonight was because I feel like we need to look at inclusive playground equipment, accessible playground. I mean, I think we're kinda behind the times, honestly, if you look at all the surrounding counties, not just the big ones, the small ones, Litchfield, Morgan Town, Greenfield...
And they get it through these grants, this is the best one we've gotten in a long time.
So, I mean, I guess I would question as well, like, you know, when you are considering, like, what are you going, what avenues will you go to consider how you're going to spend that money? Or what would you be open to hearing from?
That's what this forum was for.
Okay, okay, so what would you want to, I mean, obviously we need accessible equipment, I think also some sensory friendly stuff.
We talked about, Sandy and I talked about some handicap accessible, you know, kind where they roll the wheelchair or whatever, lock it in and they can swing that way, stuff, you know, stuff like that, we will look at that, yes.
Litchfield has a really nice, they have a separate area, it's like they have a playground and then they have like a sensory, or it's like a separate, it's an whole sensory like playground. And, I mean, as we all well know, I mean, there's such an increase in kids that would benefit from there. And also the safety issue, like, could potentially be able to barricade it, I mean, not barricade, but you know, put...
Fence it off or something.
Put a fencing around it, I mean, Morgan Town, it's great, it has everything all the way around it, has, it's fully accessible, has some sensory friendly stuff, something on. I mean, I could get any information on anything that's over there, my brother-in-law's the city manager over there, and what they got, how much, I mean, I'd be willing to help on any, in any direction at all.
Again, this is why we're here, I found this just about a month ago, month and a half ago, and did the groundwork, and the lady I'm working with over there, she is gone above and beyond, she found some stuff for us we didn't even know we could get. But it is a million dollar grant that we're going to give.
Up to.
Up to, up to. I should say that, up to a million dollar grant, but if we go all the way to a million, our price for the city, we'd only have to match with twenty thousand dollars, which is...
But they may not approve the million, I mean, that's why I wanted...
Pretty sure, pretty sure we're gonna get some.
Yeah, we'll get some.
So, I mean, I know a lot of people will go, a lot of people say we need the water, we need splash park, we need, I mean, in reality, Parker has two at the county park now, I mean, we're not big, and I'm not against it, but I think we need to look at the things that are not provided anywhere in our county. And Ellis just put in a couple, like, handicapped accessible things, but there's nowhere like sensory friendly playgrounds, I mean, there's nothing like that in our county. And there's no, you know, safe places, you could say, I mean, I have, I now have a child and he has autism, they're runners, you know, they love to grow, they'll escape, so like, parents, they can't take them anywhere, they can't, we don't provide anything here locally that would offer that. So, I mean, I would say we look into something that does not exist within our county, and then if there's money left on the table, you know, add to it, but...
Well, I didn't think, like I said, whatever we do, I think we'll still have money left over to do something else. I mean, this could be a staging thing, we could do one thing, then do another thing, and then do another. Because we're, like I said, if, if, if we get the whole thing, that would be...
Right.
I mean, just awesome.
When do we expect to hear?
We're going through the process right now, this is one of the things we had to do, was have a formal meeting in public, and the other thing was, we had to vote on it, which we already have done that. And what was the other thing, there was three things, wasn't there?
Well, the applications due at the end of May.
Yeah, but you had to sign the application, did you do that?
We haven't got it, I haven't got it yet.
Okay, she'll send it to you then.
But it's, it's due the end of May, and then most likely, if it's like any of the others, because we've gotten some of these before, but not quite on these terms. But probably be, if the past experience holds true, November, December, before you get word on it, and then it could be sometime next summer or fall getting...
It's not, it's not...
Right, so when you get ready to do the application, do you need to provide to them what you're gonna do with the money at that point, or do you just...
Not necessarily, you could put one, one, like, we could just put playground equipment down there, possibly.
Would it be more like, did it, if you provided more, like, specifics, I mean, with that?
One of the things we were trying to do was make it big enough where they go, oh, that would be nice, you know, and then if we didn't use it for, say the water park, say we did a seven hundred thousand dollar water park. It wouldn't be that much, but I'm just saying. If we did a seven hundred thousand dollar water, they go, oh, well, we can give them that, you know, and that would be great, and then if we got it, we don't necessarily have to use it for that, we can use it for something else.
No, 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 no.
Well, we can use it for something else that has pertained to that.
That's on the grant, application.
On the grant, it's on the grant.
Where are we planning on, I mean, where are we gonna develop it back, I mean, to get this grant and...
I'd like to use it on both parks, I'd like to use it on the one down there and I'd like to use it on Oldham also, part of it, anyway.
Well, I mean, what about, I mean, that's a good idea, but we don't, we need to, I mean, to address the problems of flooding and the situation down there before you start adding work to it, because...
I wish I could do something about that, I really do.
I've lived down there for, my parents own for forty, thirty, ten years, and the flooding is getting worse. It's been used to flood maybe once or a couple of years, now every time it rains, we're flooded.
It is bad, I agree with you, I'm not gonna lie.
And the ditches out there are not cleaned out, they're not cleaned out, I don't know who that is responsible, but they're not, you know, but that's, I would think we'd have to do something about it before we start putting any equipment, wouldn't we?
Well, it would determine where the equipment went on the park.
Yeah, it had to be somewhere where it would be underwater, that's for sure. No matter what we build, it would have to be somewhere where it was not gonna be underwater. And that's why I said something about Oldham, in case, you know, we want to put something up there.
Yeah, and they tell me that, or, I don't know, it seems like the flood is getting worse, and it happens, the more development goes on, the more it floods over towards our side of the area.
Our rainfalls come in a lot harder, a lot quicker, and a lot more at a time, that's...
The ground is stain wet, and the, whenever it starts raining, it can rain maybe two hours, and I can see the water start to come from the park area over towards my home. And my home is run now because of the flooding. My land and my underbelly, all that stuff's gone, my floors are warped from the flooding, and I can't do anything back because I can't stop the, you know, flooding, so I'm stuck. And there way, if I fix anything, it's gonna happen again. But if you look at the ditches down through there, and it goes out, there's no way for it to go, it's supposed to flow on out through the bottoms.
It goes out and then turns and goes across and then comes out right by McDonald's out there. It goes that way, turns and comes back up.
Have you looked at the land out through there where it flows through? There's just little, little crevices going different places because that sort of ditch is not, it's not flowing through it. And there's a lot of water that comes towards that ditch in Hinton County. So I believe that Travis said the ditches that you were referring to, would they be towny? Yeah, that's what I didn't know, I didn't know who was...
Well, the sad part of it is, it's private property. The landowners, it may be property lines, but it's landowner ditches, and then you have to deal with the corps of engineer on cleaning out ditches.
They're responsible, because we are dealing with a lot of sanitation problems right there. There is the ground stinks, there's an odor that comes from it, we've already had two dogs die from it, the virus has come up from the ground, the dirt there. So, I mean, I'm, I don't, I didn't know who to talk to, or who I needed to see about that, because I've been doing this, you know, I've never seen it like this, and it's just getting worse.
No, I understand.
I mean, every time it floods, we get garbage from everywhere in our yard, floods from, you name it. And it doesn't go on out because it sticks in the trees and it's stuck, and there's trees in the ditch and garbage in the ditch, and I don't know.
I mean, we try to keep everything clean within the city limits, that's...
Well, we are within the city limits.
No, no, I know, but that's as far as the extent as we can go.
But who takes care of it all that, is that county?
Well, it's all private property. Should be the property owners.
I don't even know, nobody out there is maintaining those, I think there's overflow or some kind of drainage for the runoff?
It's all through the natural, natural drains and creeks.
So there's nothing...
I wish there was an answer.
So we don't have a plan to help with the flooding?
I mean, we keep everything we can clean out that we can in this, within the city. Kevin, you anything else?
I don't think so, I just wanted to make sure everybody understood what we were doing, so, that's it.
So what, I mean, so when will, like...
It would be, it would be next year before we got the money, so it'd be next summer before we'd ever do anything. But we have to get the money now.
Right, so when you go, like I said, when you're gonna do the grant, you've kinda gotta have an idea of what you're gonna do. Like, I don't, I don't, so, like, when's that gonna be decided, at what point is that gonna be decided, like, what you're gonna request, or on...
Well, I have to do it before the end of May.
So when would that happen, or what, I mean, I'm just saying, I don't know with the process or like where to come in, or, you know, I would be, I don't care to do legwork, I don't care to get other parents involved, that have different kids, different needs, whatever, I just don't know, would it be wait till next month, and come to another meeting, or reach out to somebody between now?
I put three things down on it. You put what you want to use it for, and I put playground equipment was one of them I put. Because if something happens, say we don't build this, we can spend it on playground equipment or something like, like playground equipment, it doesn't have to necessarily be perfectly playground equipment, but something that goes along with playground equipment. Like the exercise stuff they put in, that can go in there. So, yeah, I put that as one of the three things I had on the thing, on the, on the list of things we would like to try and get and try and build.
They can't sneak more stuff around, they'd really be more at peace.
So, I mean, since there's time, and there is time, I just kinda wanna make sure that, I really wanna make sure it happens, but also that, you know, you get the right people involved when you're making the decisions, to make sure that what you put in is really gonna be utilized by the parents and by the families that need it, you know. Versus, I'm not saying you wouldn't do your best, but, you know, I feel like you wanna get the people that are gonna be utilizing it.
Well, and I'm maybe speaking out of turn, again, this is from past experience with other grants, if on the playground, if they put in playground equipment and they add sensory equipment, you can be pretty vague right now, on this portion of it, it's when you go to picking out, you have to have a budget, of course.
And the next step would be when you have to...
When we start picking stuff out, next, once the grant's awarded.
And we've looked at sensory equipment before, it's not, this is not something new to us, we've looked at it before. The only problem with playground equipment is it's so expensive. Very expensive.
But it sounds like we're gonna have a lot...
Again, that, that, don't, don't jinx it.
I mean, I know, but like, potentially, you know, potentially.
I'm hoping, and I'm really hoping big time, so.
So like, when that rolls around, would it be open, I mean, at that point, would it be open to like, for people, you know, to bring the dishes, bring input, or have a meeting, you know, to specifically discuss those things, I mean, would that be...
Yeah, I mean, I'm open to all, you know, input, you're more than welcome to contact me anytime and talk about it, because we are wanting to know, you know, that's one of the things we're trying to do, is try and help what the community, you know, with what the community needs and wants. Some of it we can do, some of it we can't do, like, again, one of the problems with the playground equipment is it is so expensive.
Yeah, yeah.
I was gonna say.
Kind of solve her information and...
Yeah, I've been some forms with that grant application.
Like I said, you're more than, more than, get adjusted anytime you want to.
And then we don't go water out, I don't want everybody going and telling everybody the people that want it, and they're gonna come after me because we didn't get a water park, but, I mean, I just think we need to make the needs on hand at first, and then, water, water's great, I mean, it's great, it's fun in the summer, but it's not yearly year-round, it's not, not practiced.
Well, playground equipment's not really year-round either, because it gets wintertime.
Well, in Kentucky, I mean...
Well, that's right, one day it can be snowing, next day it can be playground break.
Two of the seven days of the week at least, you have all seasons in a week.
Well, and maybe in the afternoon.
We have all season every day.
There's not many months that you can spend strong time, there's no amount of time I can run it.
That is true.
And I apologize, but Kevin, you did make me think of something else, Travis, and excuse me for interrupting.
Go ahead.
What about the buildings at Oldham, have you heard back from the guy I was gonna check about the asbestos?
I haven't heard back from the guy, I can, I need to reach out to him.
Please, yeah. Before I get that old red truck started.
That's it, I just wanted to make sure everybody understood that.
Travis, you have anything?
I have some quotes here for a truck, we had a truck also budgeted in the water department, so I have a quote for us, a Chevy fifteen hundred and twenty-five hundred. That's what we've been going with lately, the availability almost.
Need to replace them all too quick.
He gets them off the ground side, although you have to...
Look at this Chevy, we got, Lord, that's, that'll start all the time. We do, plus it's hard, it's rough looking, but it'll always crank.
And this was, we're way under budget.
Are these two, two different?
Yeah, one of them's a fifteen hundred Silverado, another one's a twenty-five hundred.
Which one do you need worse?
The twenty-five hundred would be a little bit more versatile, but the fifteen hundred is a little cheaper.
Well, yeah, it's a smaller truck.
How much?
Not that much.
We could be fine.
Are you going to get just a regular cab, or are you going to get an extended cab?
Not that much cheaper. Yeah, not that much cheaper.
I don't care, you put more stuff in, even if it's an extended cab, you're just up there. Hey, have you been in their vehicles, that's all they got in their stuff.
Hey, his...
His was better hilarious.
The more room they got, the more stuff to put in.
That's how I am.
When you get to it, I mean, it's not that much of a difference. When you're talking those kind of dollars.
We had it in the budget to buy, well, when both of those prices are under what we had budgeted to buy, then we got that money in the budget to buy, so I thought that would probably be a good time to upgrade one.
Which do you feel would better serve?
I don't know, cut my leg off. Twenty-five hundred's just so much more versatile.
What's the difference?
Forty-six than forty-one, I read forty-two.
Either way would be, what we are gonna replace is gonna be just a...
I think you better stick with twenty-five hundred.
Yeah, because I mean, when you're looking at that much money, five thousand is not that much.
Form a motion.
How much move if I purchase a new twenty-five hundred pickup?
We have a motion is second, any further discussion? Those in favor, signify by the aye. Post same. Motion passes. Anything else, Travis?
With that being said, usually this is when we make a budget amendment, if we have one, and we are under the budget in every department on expense side, and our income is pretty close all the way across the board, we might be a little over on the income on one area and maybe a little under on the other, but we're pretty, pretty close to what we have projected. So no budget amendment is needed at this time.
That's a plus.
That's all I got other than...
Mike, Kenny? You have anything else?
I have a question. It's concerning flooding, I went to FEMA website, and when I tried to apply, it told me that our county was not, we had not participated in the disaster. It wouldn't let me, I mean, it told me I couldn't apply, and that until we were added to it, this county...
I think there, I think when, when the disaster was declared, you might know a little bit about this, he picked, the governor had like twelve counties just immediately in. But they're gonna branch out as it goes, your best bet would probably be to get with Charlie Shields.
It would be, because FEMA's already been into other counties.
Yeah.
Yeah, but it just website won't allow you to apply for anything. It shuts it down, I mean, you can't put an application, it goes into a following, until this county, this is activated and we do that.
That'd be a fifth or fourth question, wouldn't it?
What I read, I thought we had to, you know, agree to be in it, or something like that, I don't know, it's kinda silly.
What it is, is a threshold, once the state reaches a certain threshold on damage, then FEMA kicks in, and then it goes down to the county, the county has to reach a certain threshold to be eligible for FEMA, but we, we have reached that threshold.
So, yeah, if you, if you get with Charlie Shields, the best thing to do is, whatever you're wanting to claim, make records of all of them.
Take all kinds of pictures.
I think we got people to the pledge about six years ago.
Yeah, so that way, whenever it does, it's not like it's, you're prepared and it may be, but Charlie Shields will be able to...
He's at the county emergency management with Ohio County.
Yeah, if you go in the community center, remember two nine eight four four one two. And if you go in the community center, his office is, you can hit it to the rock, like you just go right in the rock.
And I do know, you, I would highly recommend go ahead and contacting him, because you have to contact them and ask to be put on the list for FEMA consideration.
FEMA is currently in the county doing assessments, so, wanna give it a call for them.
Okay, you think? Ms. Davy?
Oh. I was here last month, and I brought up the house, my house here on one oh two North Pearl Street, and you all said you would be interested in it. Well, so I went back, did some frames at it, and so I own from corner lot to corner lot, so I'm willing to sell all of it, just get rid of, from corner lot to corner lot, even the house I'm in.
Have you?
I don't need it.
Do you have a price, Davy?
Seventy-five thousand.
How much?
You don't have any, that much acreage or anything, is that what, I know it's all the way across, it's all block, it goes from one street to the other.
It's from corner lot to corner lot.
Well, we'll take it under consideration.